Thanks for coming, everybody. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm thrilled there's so many people interested in our downtown. Uh, or just interested in free food, one or the other. Not sure which of them. Um, but before we kick off our, our work for the night, in terms of our downtown vision planning update, we have a related presentation to make to kick things off. Adam Bliss, our town engineer, and Brett Richardson, who's the executive director of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation, have been hard at work trying to make Town Hall a better place so that we could do more stuff like this up in front of our. Uh, and in pursuit of that, they applied for a grant. Uh, and I'll let them deliver the good news. I don't want to steal their thunder entirely. Uh, but I'll turn over to Adam for a short presentation, then we'll get going with downtown.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan and Mary. Uh, ninety-eight percent of the credit goes to this guy to my left. It was his idea and his shepherding of all the pieces um, to bring, to basically put together a grant that T-Mobile puts out to, offers out to municipalities. Um, the town of Freeport was one of five hundred applicants during the summer. And uh, we were successfully awarded a grant for fifty thousand dollars.
And what?
Ninety-eight.
Yeah, that is the next.
Hi, Bob. Uh, for um, a community gathering space and amphitheater uh, at Town Hall. Uh, there's a lot more to that. Uh, I'm happy to share with everyone that comes and visits this display board behind us uh, when we start to mingle. Um, but it, it's uh, it addresses ADA accessibility, aging in place, stormwater treatment, uh, it offers a place for people to gather, have a cup of coffee, uh, maybe pick up an instrument and play, or um, maybe do some artwork out front. So, a big thanks to T-Mobile for uh, uh, making this project possible.
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, T-Mobile twenty twenty-one, we uh, started our small town rural community uh, program. Um, so it was a five-year program to build out our connection to small towns, really, uh, to revitalize communities, to help with new projects, really just to give back to the community in areas that we've never been before. Uh, places where we're going, uh, places that we want to connect with people. So, uh, we really just are over, overjoyed to be able to present this jacket for fifty thousand dollars to the town of Freeport for you folks to enjoy and to really uh, get to re-vitalize your community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, there we go. I know, I should have gave.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks a lot. In, in case you and your folks are in the area or whatever, uh, this is Dustin and Dylan. They are our management team in the Brunswick location. They're the closest store to you folks if you're in need of anything else. But uh.
We need to change carriers, thank you.
We got you. All right, thank you, guys. Thanks very much. And we need a shelf down on the side. Oh, we got them over, so. All right, thank you again. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
Uh.
I did, well, yeah. I sent the resume back to you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Outdoor park in front of Town Hall.
Don't pick over me.
Um, so this is Mary Davis. She's the president of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation. Her salary is zero dollars per year. And she works an incredible number of hours. It's been at my side along with some other people like Tom Woodney, who's here on our downtown project, which we've been working on for two years. Um, my name's Dan Filch. I'm the chair of the council. Uh, and uh, I'm thrilled. Uh, this is a great turnout. It's honestly a lot bigger than we expected, which is fantastic. Um, at the town, I think the turnout that we've had for our work has been uh, really impressive. Like the consultants that we hired, the principal group, uh, he said that it's unusual to have so many people involved in the town. So, I'm gonna turn over to Mary to do some, some introductions and then I'll explain the sort of structure of the.
Well, first I have to say, uh, this is like a dream come true. Two and a half years ago, when we started this process of, we were worried about the downtown. We were worried about what was going on economically with it. And my buddy in crime, my partner in crime, Tony, and I started interviewing consultants to help us figure out how to create a downtown vision. Because as we said, we don't even know what we want. So, how can we build it if we don't know what we want? And so, we hired this consultant who was known for bringing communities together. And the goals that we gave this consultant, two of the primary goals, we wanted it to be inclusive. We wanted this to be a process that included the towns, the residents, the owners, the shopkeepers, the elders, the kids, the us, the tween. We wanted it to be inclusive so that all of us could redefine what we wanted in the downtown. So, I want to ask you, how many of you were involved in any of the meetings for the whole downtown planning? Wow, wow. And what our consultants told us is like this never happens. The first meeting that we had, they said, well, you'll have twenty there. And I think we had seventy-five on that Town Hall. So, we have achieved it. It's been unbelievable that we have a plan that did include folks. We brought it to the town hall in March. They accepted the plan, which is wonderful. Here we go with a great plan. But our second goal was that it has to be put into action. We don't want a plan that sits on the table that we spent a lot of money to do and that it sits there and nothing happens. So, the really wonderful thing about tonight is all of you who are on these volunteer boards that are trying to help get stuff done, me, raise your hands, please. Come on, raise your hands. Look around you, you all. Those are your, your partners in crime. They're residents of Freeport who have put their hands up and said, we want to get things done. We want to blow this into life. We want all those ideas that we had on the boards for the downtown vision to actually get done, which that was our second goal. So, unbelievable. I feel like this is such a dream come true. And I have to point out one person because if it were not for Johnny, he can add to the board. Tony and I went to him and said, hey, John, how about giving this money to do a downtown vision? He's kind of like, okay, let's go. So, it took a lot of people and the council and the votes from the council to help get it here and a lot of volunteers. So, you're here tonight because we want your further input. All these volunteer boards have come up with projects that they want to do first, that they want, we want to start on. And we want to tell you what those are. So, we want you to have time to ask questions, to watch the reports. Dan's gonna explain the process of it. But again, this is continued to be that inclusion of what do we want? If we know what we want, we can get it. And guess what? This won't be the last time we do this. Because if we're doing it correctly, we got to come back and visit it often and have it sit on the shelf. Because I've put way too many hours doing this, so have so many of you. So, this is super cool. I'm very excited to have you here. Thank you, Robert.
So, we've got work to do, uh, but it's good work. So, in May, on May third, we probably were all in Town Hall when the principal group presented their final plan. Which uh, is on website called FreeportDowntown.me. Hundred and thirty odd pages of what we can do with our downtown. Lots of that and that and pictures. In the back, we asked them to say, don't give us a plan that's gonna sit on the shelf for ten years. Give us a plan we can work with that has actionable steps we can take to start doing things. So, in the back, they made a list for us, things we can do. Then the list goes on and uh, and there's eighty-two things on the list, projects we could do. We can't do all of those things right now because we would never get done and we would run out of money. So, we kind of came up with a process for how to, how do we figure it out? How do we get still it down? So, what we've been doing since May, when they presented the project, is we met every month with the representative from each of our town boards and committees. So, our town boards and committees are like Planning Board, Project Review Board, Sustainability Advisory Board, and so on. Uh, and we said, tell us what's important to you and your board and the people you represent. We also went public to the meetings. So, we've had people from other nonprofits in town. So, open meetings and through that, we got a lot of feedback. And we got something on the order of twenty-four projects or so from that list of eighty-two that we felt were important. And those meetings themselves were also important because it allowed the groups to talk to each other. Because each of the committees tends to operate in a silo. They have their monthly meetings, they do their work, they go home. Uh, but they told us, they said, it would be great to know what the other committees are doing, what else is going on in downtown. So, that's the other function of that task force that's been meeting every month. Good meetings are continuing to happen. They're the fourth Thursday, uh, and they're always on, too. So, anybody who wants to dial in, they're on the town website and calendar there. Uh, we'd love to have your input or just want to eavesdrop and say, hey, what's going on with the downtown stuff? That's a good way to find out.
And again, Dan, those of you who've been at that meeting every Thursday, please put your hands up so that I can hear more. If anyone has questions in your room. Thank you.
Um, okay, so there are no bad ideas on the list. So, we couldn't go through the list and say, well, these are dumb ideas. Let's not do those. They're all good ideas. So, it was really hard to figure out where to start. Um, one of the things we did is separate the list into aspirational goals and actionable projects. So, an aspirational goal is something that isn't necessarily gonna have an ending. It's not like we do tasks one, two, and three, and then we're done and we crush that one off. An aspirational goal might be encourage more housing in downtown. There are a lot of different ways to do that, a lot of projects we can undertake to get that done. But it's not like we do it, we check the box, and we move on to the next project. That's something we're gonna be working on for several years. Um, separate then those aspirations and those goals are projects we can work on. Install bike racks downtown. All right, well, we know we want six bike racks. But here, once we're gonna install, that practice is done and we move on. So, we separated the goals from the projects. And then we said, okay, for each of the goals and projects, what are the most, I don't want to say the most important ones, but what are the ones we think we can get started on now? So, we took the input from the boards and committees public. And then four of us, Adam Bliss, our town engineer, you met a minute ago, Mary Davis, who you met, myself and Caroline, who's hiding in the back of the room, who's our town planner, uh, kind of filtered that list and said, oh, those things that everybody wants to do, what, what's feasible? What kind of things can we do? What's the town home? Who do we have influence over? Um, what are we thinking we're gonna get going in the next couple of years? We did a little bit of filtering and added a couple of things because nobody shot their hand up and said, I want to work on parking. But we all thought parking was a pretty important thing for us to think about, so we added parking to the list. Um, so that's how we got to where we are tonight. So, we have nine goals and twelve projects. And I don't know if there were enough of these to go around, uh, but inside, you'll see basically copies of the board. And on each board are some goals and some projects. And they're separated by each of the core values that came from our downtown plan. So, one core value, as for instance, also one I can read, is New England Village Center, something that's very important to us. And then supporting that was encourage multifamily housing and make future development, assess parking requirements, streamline the permitting process, and update zoning to match what the plan says. Uh, then we have sustainable growth with its own projects, Parks and Culture with its own projects, Downtown For All, which is a little bit of a parade of other projects, um, small business ecosystem, where we got Tony from the chamber and Mary and Brett. And a lot of cultural communities. With, by the way, that, that Town Hall park project that we talked about, T-Mobile, that's all up here. So, you can see what the parks and all of them. Um, so the task for tonight, work for here to do, isn't just to sit there and listen me speak and get free food. Uh, you can certainly do that. But what I'll ask is that you go around each of the stations. Each board has a host who can explain the things on the board and answer questions about them. Uh, I'll be at that board by the door. Uh, and there'll be different people at each of the other boards. And you can ask questions. What we're looking for tonight is, did we get it right? Are the things on the boards important? Is there anything that you thought was gonna be on a board that you don't see on a board? Uh, there are definitely some, like I said, there are a lot of good ideas that we don't think we're gonna get to right away. Um, but that's the kind of people we're looking for. So, we'll, we'll give thirty or forty-five minutes or so to do that, and then we'll regroup. And then let me just take one more minute to say what's gonna happen when we regroup, so nobody's surprised at the end.
Let me add one thing. What you're gonna see is the list of priorities that came from all these boards that we talked. And they're set in that place because we know we want to get some early wins. So, let's do a few things and do them well, and then we can go back to the list and see what else holds up. But this is what all of these boards said. We think these are the priorities. It wasn't priorities that we said, it's priorities of the boards. We want to get some early wins. We want to get some momentum.
And it's, um, the, the tough part is ahead of us. It's actually getting the work done, getting it funded, assigning people projects. So, that's why the council's here tonight. So, if you guys on the council, could you raise your hands so everybody knows who the counselors in the room are? Uh, there's seven of us, four over there, two here. At, at the end of the, of the, the sort of walk around period, we're gonna come back and we're all gonna discuss this in the council. And I'm gonna give you guys homework and put you on the spot, too. Go down and ask each of you to say, what did you hear? Uh, as you were walking around the room. Since we can't get everybody in the room to uh, to speak, I'll ask you seven, kind of be represented as far as you hear. And then what we're gonna do is we'll have Q and A. We can have a discussion amongst ourselves. It's extensive, we're as neutral as we want. Open up the floor to questions. We have podium if you want to ask questions. Uh, this is an informal meeting. We're not taking any votes tonight, not taking action tonight. But what I'm hoping will happen is after tonight, if we think we got it right or we need to tweak a couple of things, within the next council meeting or so, hopefully we'll be in a position where we can say, yeah, these are our priorities for action. We have our plan, this is our vision. This is the direction we want to head. As a community, we all said that's the right direction. Now we want to say, what, what can we start? So, that's where I'm hoping we're gonna get to at the end of the night. And also, last thing, on the back of this handout, our names, uh, of group organizations and individuals who are here to represent those group organizations. If you want to get involved in one of these projects.
Everybody who wants to get involved, raise your hands down.
So, a lot fewer hands, you all, for that. But reach out, so talk to the people here tonight. As we talk into the Arts and Culture Board, talk to whoever's representing the Arts and Culture Board. We have two or three people. And say, hey, I'd really like to get more involved. How do we do it? There's names, there's emails here. This is not something you kind of hand out with a council and say, do it. It's something that we're all gonna do. So, with that, did it miss anything?
No. Folks who are banning the boards or womaning the boards, get to your boards, please, and all the rest of the group. We just want you to wander around, talk to the folks who are at the boards, see what you say, give them your comments, give them your thoughts. This is time to walk around and look. We'll pull you back together.
So, that's where right now.
I agree, they shouldn't be going by your houses. There's too many people. They're gonna go across my street. They're gonna go over to go down west. They're gonna.
And what I'd like to do now is do a Q and A. So, I'd love for the council to kind of say, here's what I heard, here are my concerns. Um, maybe start the discussion a little bit. And then if you're from the public, and then we can kind of decide whether to vote something. So, if that all sounds good, I'll grab a seat and then um, walk, walk the table. Uh, if you do want to, when we get to the Q and A part, if you can, make your way up to a podium over there by the camera, behind the camera. Um, and if not, maybe one of us can repeat the question. But they're recording this and it's gonna be available on to um, town website and YouTube for here. So, with that, Matt, can I pick on you to go first?
I can kind of share on the dots that you had after.
Uh, yeah, this will be incredibly brief because, one, I got derailed just talking about other stuff. Uh, but most of the feedback that I heard was actually affirming what we were already talking about. Um, you know, there were some comments and, and some ideas thrown out. Uh, I'll use the example for the walkable and bikable about maybe there could be creation of uh, sort of uh, park and ride type situations where, you know, you could have an area, instead of having to try to hope you, the trail or the connectivity got to your area, you could drive a little bit and park and then utilize the trail network. Um, but like I said, most of it, most of the conversation was really affirming a lot of the ideas that had already been generated. Um, so I didn't hear a lot of uh, other points to, to be included. Um, and like I said, I did get derailed a little bit uh, in other conversations, but. But I'm glad, I'm glad I got to go first. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Jake, what about you?
I heard some really great things about Mallet Drive and rebuilding that, which as a Connect Freeport person made me really excited. Um, I heard some people say that a bandstand at Memorial Park would be a great thing. So, like picking old, other projects that might not have gotten done. Um, and I also had some conversations about dogs downtown and maybe, you know, what we can do for that, which I think would be great, too. So, it was interesting.
Top of your theme.
Okay. Uh, a couple of points I, I thought made a lot of sense. Uh, one in particular is Hedgehog Mountain and the mountain biking, which I, I think is a great idea. But uh, the concern, they want to have some sort of funding. So, the maintenance and the ongoing cost isn't borne by taxpayers. And I really like that idea. And I think we can use that model for other projects as we look forward and build the town out. I think that's very important. Lot of talk about ADA. And when we look at these projects, we don't want to forget ADA. Make it accessible for other people that can get in. And uh, there was one idea of maybe creating a mechanism to tax some possible businesses coming in to help fund that. Uh, that'd be something we could look at. Uh, the other interesting thing is affordable housing was certainly something that we've heard. And uh, uh, it's, it's kind of interesting. Being born and brought up in Freeport for sixty-six years, we had, the old downtown in Freeport in the seventies had everything. And John Lowe there, a lot of people are shaking their head yes. So, it's gonna be interesting how we can transition back uh, prior to the fire we had midtown. So, I hope uh, we can take some of the history we did. And uh, you know, we, the, the good thing is the parking we have worked itself out tremendously. And, and it's kind of unique on what we're doing here. And there's also a concern that we don't mess with that and we don't lose it. So, we want to be very conscious of our parking and, and make sure that uh, you know, we don't lose and maybe we can answer a little bit and, and use. Uh, parking lots aren't used full to their full capability. Maybe full housing or something in the outlying areas. So, some great discussions and thank you.
That would, so that the counselors were all kind of sprinkled around. Other than me, I was dedicated to a board. Everyone else was circulating around. Counselor Bradley.
Um, I, I heard everything from political discussions about races in town that are interesting. I heard um, about items that were um, missing in some ways from some people's view.
Robert?
I'm, I heard about some projects that might be missing. I think my overall sense was that uh, the, when you listen to what people were thinking they wanted and what's up on the board, that the boards are kind of cautious. That um, there, there are things in people's minds that are more ambitious than what are up on the boards, but they're in the same area. It's not like, oh, this is nuts. It's like, oh, we could be doing much more than that if we really spent a half a million dollars getting to this point. Let's get it done, okay? Um, I had a long talk with the FEDC director, Mr. Brett, about sewer, which, you know, I think we agreed is critical to anything we're trying to achieve downtown. And again, it says rethink sewer connection fees. That's not it. Fix sewer connection fees. And I understand that that's both politically and personally and institutionally and organizationally a difficult topic to bring to a head. But I think it needs to come to a head. And I think, you know, I don't know if Brett can speak for himself, but there was a, a discussion around whether we're doing enough on that. I thought there were, I, now I'm talking about me from Marblehead, you know, who has as much input as everybody else. Um, I wonder where transportation fits in all of this. Um, back and forth along Main Street. We have all kinds of people, whether it's ADA or not, who shop but can't walk, but they're hopefully in one parking place. How do they get from that parking place to all the stores? Um, back and forth. And then we have huge assets in this town. We all know who they are, what they are. We love them, we enjoy them. We may not want the visitor to be there. I understand. Um, but on the other hand, they are part of our community and they are connected to our downtown. In my view, we ought to think about how we get people who want to see them there. I could go on and on and I won't. That's, those, that, those are the, one more thing I'll just say. That this, we're, we're trying now, you know, we, Dan adequately, not ad, he, he admirably described the process that we've been through. You know, you started with principal group. And it was a huge reach out. Tell us what your ideas are. They came up with eighty-two um, actionable items. There's, I, I challenge anybody to find one or two items on that that are not ideas of merit. Do they fit for us? We don't know. So, we're sifting through that set. And Dan did, you know, an amazing job. I mean, if you don't know how hard he's been working on this and how open he's been to every group in this town to ask them what they think, what their priorities are, and then spending time. He's met with me twice. Crazy that he met with me twice, but he did, an hour, hour and a half, just to hear what I had to say. And some of which I'm repeating. But, so now is another sifting going on. And so, my question is, for all of us as counselors, we're gonna set priorities based on this sifting process. And that's what Dan has in mind and it makes sense. When do we start talking about what it costs and where the money comes from? Because no one in this room's talking about it and none of the counselors are talking about. We have ideas, you know, but the ideas are not connected to, to ideas about where the money comes from. And I think if you're gonna prioritize something, you have to know what it costs, where it comes from, and who's gonna pay it. And if we don't do that, then before we're done, and I know Dan's thinking about it, I don't mean to say that this is just my thought, but it hasn't happened yet. So, as we go through the sifting process, I'm hoping that money comes into the, the equation to a greater degree than it has. So, I'll be quiet now. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, and thanks for the kind words. Um, I'll, I'll list a couple of things. I was over at the Downtown For All Board. Um, so for folks that didn't make it over there, a few of the things that we were talking about there. Uh, one idea that came up is uh, do we need a shuttle bus, trolley, jitney, pedicab, something like that to move people around town? Uh, as we build more housing and get more development pressure in the core and parking gets a little bit further out, that problem may get, be exacerbated. Um, so that's something we need to keep in mind. Uh, accessibility came up as an overall theme, um, as it does with a lot of our projects. Uh, signage, we have some very old signs in town directing people where to go. Uh, so those are due for a refresh and that's something we want to do in the short term. And we've got a few people that have kind of raised their hand to say that they can help with that. Uh, housing, others have talked about. Uh, traffic in town, uh, traffic at parking and, and, and transportation is all interconnected. So, that's gonna be a, a chief theme that we'll need to deal with. Uh, and other things people have already mentioned, so I'll skip that. So, do you guys want to go ahead and then we'll have a little council discussion?
Yeah, I don't think I heard anything that hasn't already been said. I'll just echo that, um, some comments about um, different, all kinds of different slices in the, in the housing continuum and that um, what we're seeing now of the market pushing prices and shrinking supply um, is making it extremely difficult for anybody to move here and work here. Um, and so that, the, the reaction to that is not necessarily just uh, have Freeport Housing Trust put up another twenty units. That's um, a great asset for the twenty families that live there, but that's not really getting at the issue. So, I think we have to have a much larger conversation about how we do more dense housing in a compact area where people want to live, which is downtown, um, and, and fit that in with uh, with existing activities. And that does absolutely require to look at transportation. Um, I agree with you, Counselor Bradley, that we need to absolutely have a finance plan attached to it. But I'm actually happy to hear that the ideas are coming forward unfiltered with the cost bit for now. But we, we, we need to get to it soon.
Is this my friend, the banker?
Chip?
I didn't hear anything negative, other than this is great and it's a great jumping off point. I made it all the way to this one. So, I don't know. We talked about um, housing, affordable housing, and came to what type of affordable housing? You know, in this town right now, we have high end and here. We have nothing in the middle. So, if you are raised here, you can't get a starter home here. We need to work on that and maybe the middle. The middle, you know, you got start a family and you want to stay here. Now you need a little bigger home. You can do that. So, we talked about what type of. little bigger home. You can do that. So we talked about what type of affordable housing that we need, instead of just going into, like you said, let's build another 20 units for this. That doesn't really help us. And we just have to be mindful of what buildings we are putting downtown and where we're putting them. More parks are good downtown, that kind of thing. So, but everything was positive. So I applaud your efforts. This is great. I've kind of been, I know, it's been everybody, but you've kind of led the way. And I've kind of stood off so I could get a fresh view and not be so invested in it that, hey, we got to do this. And then it's like, wait a second, we're, so it's great to see all of this.
Yeah, awesome. So just because a few people were surprised when it came up in conversation, I thought I'd just mention, I think most of you know, there's 140 apartments that are recently completed on Desert Road, just off the highway. There are 60 or 70 apartments that are in the permitting process for Depot Street, right across from where Wilson's Leather used to be. So those could start construction soon, within a year, maybe. They still have a little bit more permitting work to do. And there's another 30 apartments proposed for the corner of West Street and Main Street, which is where the farmer's market has been all Fridays through the summer. So there's a lot going on in housing, in Freeport in general. We know it's not enough. And at our last meeting, we announced that we're going to create a housing task force that we still have to kind of work out the details for. But we want to do that pretty soon and get that going. Because housing is a very complicated, complicated thing for us to wrestle with and a lot of moving parts. And to the finance question, Brett at FEDC has some proposals that he's working on with how do we, what are different mechanisms we can use to help encourage developers to do it and help the town do it. So that's all to come. Council Bradley.
Question. Housing is clearly a priority for the downtown revisioning and one I agree with 100%. There's a voice that I have not heard in the discussions, and it's from the RSU. And I would love to hear the RSU's input into all the housing issues that are under consideration, because they could, maybe don't, but could have an impact on a number of things that you have to deal with and pay for. Bali?
Yes. So let me take a minute while it's just the seven of us up here before I invite everybody else to come back up for Q and A if there are any cues left. Where I was thinking of going with this is at a, an upcoming meeting soon, either our next one or if it's not that one, it'll have to be in December, when we may have a different council, but hopefully the process will continue. At the, at an upcoming meeting, I'd like to say, let's get this group of 21. And if we need to tweak it, we can tweak it. But let's say, yeah, okay, we're, these look good enough. These are things we're happy to start moving forward with. So that by the time we get to our budget season, which is typically February to May, we have this in the back of our minds. We know that these are 21 or 22 or 24 projects that we know at some point we want to start thinking about. Some don't require a lot of money, like creating a map of accessible trails in Freeport is not a very large capital expense. Reconstructing Mallett Drive is a huge expense, and we've already got a lot of money set aside for that. So that's where I was thinking of going, is kind of saying, you know, do we as a group of seven agree with the 21 that we came up with? Are you guys all okay with that general plan? Do you have questions about the process? Council Bradley.
To my earlier point about money, you know, you in your sitting have gone to the organizations that have passions about and around and have ended up on your list. Could we go back to them before we have our discussion and ask them for their ideas about how to fund the things that they want? Because they may have better ideas than we do about grants, about ways other people have funded these things, what they cost. Because I think if we go into a aspirational kind of conversation first, despite what, we've got the ideas now, right? I mean, we're pretty close. We've got a bucket we're going to talk about. Now, now we're going to start talking, and you're already saying, this is going to lead us into budget. I wonder how we get there without having the inputs you've already gotten on aspirations.
Yeah. Great question. And one of the really neat things that has come out of these monthly task force meetings we've been having, is that we took the plan from that downtown plan, and we made our own version of it. And in our version of it, we asked the boards and committees to say, who, you know, who can we talk to about this? What are your next steps? What resources do you need? What's standing in your way? And one of the columns here, which even I can't read because the print's too small, is what are potential funding sources? And they've already started to fill that in. Hey, there's this grant program that might help us for trails. Here's another grant program that might help us for safe pathways back and forth to school. So we started the discussion. We'll continue that at the task force meetings, which again, open to the public for Thursday of the month. Council Fournier.
21 is a large number, or 22, whatever it is. I would be more inclined maybe to look at a three-year, five-year commitment, then divide that, those priorities back into one, year one, year two, year three, because I think that helps a lot on where we're looking at funding. I think it helps the community say, okay, this is the direction we're going, and we'll be able to achieve some wins. So I think that's important. So I'd like to, instead of taking the whole, I'll kind of break it down a little bit, and you know me on funding. So, you know, that's a critical thing we'll look at. But I really want to see, you know, some wins moving forward, which I think is critical.
Yeah. And then more as a reminder for us, but more just for the public, when we think about capital planning, our finance director looks at what are the next 20 years look like? What firetracks are we going to need to replace? What buildings do we need to reconstruct? What roads do we need to rebuild? And then she takes a five-year view and gives us a recommendation for a capital plan that says, what should we set aside for our five-year spending? That's our sort of our savings account for these projects. So that's where I thought this would feed into. And maybe 21 isn't the right number. Maybe that's too ambitious. Maybe it's not ambitious enough. But that's the kind of discussion I'd like to, for us to have. And, yeah. You guys ready for some Q and A? I imagine a lot of the questions got asked as you were walking around the room. But if there are remaining questions, I would love to have more people up here to keep me company because I feel kind of isolated. So Caroline, Adam, Mary, Brett, if you guys want to come up, because some of the questions might be for you guys, or better answered by you guys. And then, yeah, anybody who wants to step up to the podium or just shout and we'll repeat the question.
I don't have a question. I have a comment to what Ed was saying about think big, and also about where the money's going to come from. And that's to think about, since you all started, we all started this planning process, the federal government has passed the largest climate action bill ever. There's, it's a revolutionary bill. There's a tremendous amount of money in there. And I think that we should, and there's a lot of thinking big in there about what to do, about insulating and solar and electrifying everything. So I think we could really begin to think a little bit bigger, because we could get the money for that. I mean, could we think about having codes where we said, well, everything has to be electric? That's what they're beginning to do in California. You know, new buildings have to be just electric, no more fossil fuels. There's money for that. So I just encourage us, I mean, the question is, who's going to learn about where all that money is? And we know some people, a frequent Ken, who work in Washington and know where some of that money is, or could help us find out some more information about that money. But if you, too, need to sort of know where that money is, somebody, you know, and how to plan around that source of money, it's a huge amount, it's more money than you're going to find. So, think big.
Yeah, thank you. So to repeat, just for the record, the question or the comment was about funding and keeping an eye on the climate funding that's coming out of Washington and making sure we can take advantage of that, because it's quite a big pot of money. And one of the things that we have in our favor is that we've recently put a sustainability coordinator in our budget. And we'll probably soon have somebody hired that we're going to share with the Armith. And one of the things that we had in mind when we were talking about this person was, there are a lot of grants out there that we need some help going after. And for the ones that relate to sustainability in particular, this person might be in a really good place to partner with Brett and others to say, hey, here are great sources of money. But I think your point about making sure that we as a group keep thinking big is important, because it's one thing to get the money, it's another thing to have the vision on what to do with it. Council Bradley.
If someone knows about something in the, you know, I can't bring it back up again, the Inflation Reduction Act, that would relate to something we're thinking about or in some other area, who do they, who's coordinating that information in our, in our world? I mean, where does it go? And where does, does Brett do it?
Yeah. So I mean, anybody at any of these tables are fair game, right? Anybody can talk to you or me.
Sure. But what would I do with it? That's.
Yeah. And then, so Brett over there has offered, based on me volunteering him to offer, to be the central point for grant coordination. So he's not going to write all the grants, but as grant opportunities come up, if we tell him, he's got a database of here, here's the opportunities, these are the ones we applied for, these are the ones we won, and these are the ones we didn't win. This is our T-Mobile grant for $50,000. Now, you can tap the button when you want to speak.
I think the thing that we have found with grants is that there's an expertise that is needed to understand the process of how you go about getting them. And I think this is a really good example of, we figured out we can do it. Yay. And that was a great effort between the town and Brett, who knows a lot about how to go after getting grants. So I think the more we identify the projects, the easier it is for us to go. The reason that we could get the T-Mobile grant is because we used a project that we had to be able to say, this is what we want to do. And we stand out from other people who are going for grant monies if we already know what we want to do. So I think, again, Brett is a really good person to help coordinate this for us. And we want more money as much as you do. And we are thinking about money, because we know this all costs money. So please, please, please feed that in. Brett, raise your hand.
Brett, 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 Brett.
Brett, 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 Brett.
And, you know, having this as an attachment to our grant application was huge, right? I think that made this T-Mobile project a lot more successful, because it says, well, these guys have really been thinking about this. This isn't just something they slapped together because they want some money, but there's 130 pages of vision here. And this is just one of the pieces that supports it.
Yeah. Brett and I have had a lot of conversations about how, when you're going for monies, people want to know that you're actually going to put it to action and use it. It's not just going to get granted to you and then nothing ever happens with it. So again, having this downtown vision and having the projects related. So, and we've got some really good things on the sustainability that folks want to do. So let's do it.
Mr. Bliss.
In my short six years with the town, I've learned there's a lot of pride and a lot of talent in the community. And just tonight, I was introduced to two grant writers. So just an example of the talent we have in this community. So I encourage those two people, Vanessa and Kathy.
Raise your hands, please.
Connect with, who, who do they reach out to?
Brett Richardson, FEDC.
And Melanie Sacks is also a resource we should be communicating with and reaching out to.
Council Fournier.
I've got maybe a question for Mary. We've got a coordinator, but it takes a lot of time and effort. So one thing I'm struggling with, do we get a pool of money that we can go out and hire people that are experts in areas we want to move forward on and say, here's your project. Go for it. So we could be juggling, Brett, you know, Brett could be juggling five or six or eight grants with other, not you writing them all, but you being the coordinator. And if we are, if we are going to go that way, you know, what is the pool of money we need? Maybe some recommendations from you and what do we come up with? Because I think that's the key, is finding the expertise to write the particular grants and move forward may make us a lot more successful.
As, as you know, Brett is the executive director of FEDC. And one of the things that he brought with him when he came to us, and seems like forever ago, but it was this year, this year, was that he had experience with grant writing. And I think you're correct in that it does take a lot of time to do it. And if we decide we want more of these, we may want to decide as a town that we need more dedicated resources to do that, because it takes a lot of resources. And grant writing is not the only responsibility that Brett has. Like, he's also trying to fill all the storefronts and make sure there's new businesses in town and such. So I think as we better understand what grants are possible for us, that's something that the town can think about. But.
Guy, it looks like you have a question.
Yeah, I stepped forward 10 minutes ago. Grant writer. No, it, as someone, you know, who is a chair committee lead, and who went through the grant writing process a year ago for, from Mallett Drive, it's, it's, there's a lot to learn. And if, if we could find some way to fund a grant writer, that would be optimal. But we could also, I think, benefit from a workshop with those folks in the room that understand how to write grants. We're all willing and able to learn, and there's no better way than training the trainer, right? So I think that's something that we could do. And you'd get a lot of volunteers. There's, there's a lot of people that are interested in learning more about how to write grants.
Yeah, I'm all, I'm all for that. I think it's a great idea. Yeah.
One of the problems with planning is that the people being planned for don't get to write the plans. And so one of the problems, for example, that. I'm sorry.
That's all right. We can, we can repeat.
Okay. One of the problems that I have noticed is no one has mentioned a website for Freeport for tourists. And just as a, just this wild idea, how about having a high school contest for the best website for Freeport? If nothing else, you'd get some good ideas out of that.
Yeah. I, so I'll take this one, just because it's been a pet peeve of mine since my three years in the council. The, I think we do an okay job. Not using the word a good job, not a great job, and apologies to the people at the table who are part of the process. But we do an okay job of communicating with our community as a town. I think we could be doing a better job. Website, absolutely. We have FreeportDowntown.me, we have FreeportMaine.com. They're, they're good. They're, leave room to be desired. And there are also a lot of other channels. There's still a newspaper. A lot of people read email. Some people don't prefer to get their news on Instagram or Facebook or YouTube. There's a lot of different ways to reach different communities, and we need to be doing it all. The problem is, I can't do it all, and the other six people and the other staff up here can't do it all. So one of the things that I've been advocating for is having a communications director that does this for a living, that can say, this is the kind of thing that should be on Instagram and Facebook. This is the kind of thing that should be on the website. This should be all the things. So one of the things, for instance, Caroline and I have been talking about, when new projects come into town, and they always get posted, they're public hearings for the project review board, but let's try and get more, more visuals up there with the project, so people can see pictures of the housing that's being proposed. So little things like that. So yes, 100% to the website, and then some, and then some, and then some. So I'm hoping that we'll get that done next year. I'll get a communications director to help with that. And maybe we can tie the high school in. I think it'd be great. I'll volunteer my daughter to do it. I'm good at volunteering other people.
Mead, live right here in town. I walk my dogs all the time, so probably most of you have seen me at some point. I know that housing's, as it's been discussed amongst everybody many times, and it's the affordable housing, like, it's been said, you have down here, you have up here, in between. Another thing with the housing that I see as an issue, and I was looking at it today, is that there's a lot of Airbnb. And I've looked at some of those, and there are places that, that's all they are. They're not somebody renting their house out because they're going away for a month. It's people that are buying property, then doing short-term. And it could be a house for somebody, you know? Figure out how to do that and help that out. I mean, it's, you see the prices on them, too, and they're absolutely outrageous. And that's per day. So, and then also, when it comes to small businesses in Freeport, our, if you want to bring small business to Freeport, prices have to come down. Because I couldn't afford a small business space in this town. And there's, and the spaces are huge. Like, they're too big. And you expect a small business to come into town and have a space that's thousands of feet? Guess what? They're, they're not going to have stock for that. What are they going to do? Build a wall that cuts it into a third of that? I mean, those kinds of things really need to be looked at. And also, if we're going to be working on bringing housing into town, there has to be more than shopping. And you got to rely, and I think that the developers aren't really looking at it as a place for people to live. They're looking at it as their money. They're looking at it as a way for them to make money. It needs to be for the people to actually have a place to be. The movie theater would be great to reopen. There's other, like, I, I kind of got tired of it being closed, so I'm doing movies at the Grange right now. And it, and, but things like that need And it, and, but things like that need to happen and need to be helped out and be going on. There needs to be more than one place for events. There needs to be more than just shopping. I mean, I walk around, like I said, I walk around all the time and I'm sometimes walking around late at night in the summer especially, I see tourists walking around completely going, is there anything to do? And they're, because guess what? They don't want to shop. They want, they want to go to a thing. And when I had my last movie at The Grange, I had two people come from the Hersec Inn and they saw my sign and they said, we were looking for something to do. So they came and saw the thing from 1951, you know, I mean, but that's the thing. It's like not just the locals, but the tourists are looking for things to do. So if, and developers, it's great that they want to develop here, but they got to look past that and everybody's got to look past that and it has to be done.
Yeah. Thank you, Sebastian. There's a lot to unpack there. I mean, that's a whole year's worth of our agendas, I think. But Airbnbs is something that we've worked on. We've, we've got some new stuff in place now. I know John's been working on the larger impact of housing. I see Tony here, I see Kelly from Visit Freeport here, and I know they've been working really, really hard on what else is there to do in Freeport in addition to shop. You know, we've got potential mountain bike trails coming, we've got festivals. The Fall Festival was a couple of weeks ago. I was working there on a Saturday and it was packed in a good way, unless you're driving through town, but, and the merchants said they had, you know, their best day of the year, I think, during the Fall Festival. So we get it. And I remember talking to John when I first joined the council and talking about how you can lie down in Main Street, seven o'clock at night, and there's nothing going on. And we need to fix that. And we have ideas and I think all, any one of us would, would love to do something about it and hopefully we'll, you know, pick away at it a little bit at a time. And I know you and Brett have been working on the business part of that question as well.
I think also do a big shout out for Kelly and Tony because Visit Freeport and The Chamber bring lots and lots and lots of people to Freeport. And it's not a small job. It's a really big job. You know, you talk about things like, you know, opening up the movie theater. It sounds so easy and I wish it were. I mean, I think one of the things that we have found is that these are big, heavy lifts to put in place to have things, we agree with you, we definitely need more to do at night, we want more to do at night, all the businesses want more to do at night. You know, it takes, what is it? It takes a village to make things happen. And I know we're always looking for more people and volunteers to help. So also, you know, we'd love to have your help and support in doing that. You know, as far as making space for new businesses, you're right, there's other communities who they do things like, if you look at Washington Avenue in Portland, they took containers and they made containers into startup shops because they were low cost. We have some work to do there, there's no doubt, because our spaces are very large. Brett's been working on a lot of that to try to make them smaller. Probably a good example of that is Tony brought a group into Freeport Village Station that is a collection of craftsmen that are in one space to try to get at that, how do we bring small businesses in? So love to have your ideas. It takes, it takes a lot of hands to make it happen, but.
Councilor Bradley.
In line with that thinking, there are organizations in town that are, have taken a lead in providing the opportunity for entertainment and for events. And, you know, because they have started that, down that road, people may be assuming that, that they're, they're fine and that they're traveling at full speed and they don't need attention or help, but they do. And so as we go through this revisioning process, don't forget that Meeting House is sort of midstream, mid-stride. So is the Historical Society and that those organizations need community support if they're going to deliver the promise that we have all invested in.
I should have put a plug in for them as well because what, what used to be known as ACAF, the Arts and Culture Association of Freeport or something close to it, Alliance of Freeport, is now no longer known as that, so I don't have to keep remembering what it stands for. Now it's called Meeting House Arts, which I think reflects their kind of signature building in the church that they renovated on Main Street. So it's, it's an adolescent organization that's done great, great things for Freeport, brought great, brought Angus King to town, brought a ton of really good speakers, and with their new executive directors in the back corner handing out lovely stickers. So they've been doing great work. We're lucky to have them.
And, and it's also interesting to see that in our seven things that came out of the revisioning, arts and culture was one of those seven. So absolutely, the whole community is saying that's important.
Yes. Kathy?
I just thank you for mentioning the Historical Society as well. I think Meeting House Arts is doing fantastically and we're across the street. I'm a volunteer, so I don't really have a big hat to wear here. But we are trying to talk about shopping and, and more so that there's a new entryway to the restored and wonderful Historical Society that will have an aerial view of the city and have flags on it. Where can you go to find music? Where can you go to find art? We're hoping to turn the garden into more of a public space. Welcome, come in and sit and play games and come in as well. So we, the Historical Society, I know, hopes to be a big partner in, particularly for those people who are with people who are shopping but don't necessarily want to shop. And then again, going to pile on about the vehicle, people know how to get there. They need to know, they need to get there to the farm and the park and Down Route One so that all the businesses in town that are beyond those three blocks that everybody walks can get the business to. So just, thank you. Thanks for this program tonight. It's great.
Yeah. Thank you for coming and thanks for all the work you've done at the Historical Society in general. One of the things I'll put in another plug for is the barn that you've lovingly restored, which initially made me mourn the loss of Frosty's Donuts until I saw what came in there and now I'm thrilled. It's a great spot. They're open past five o'clock, so it's, it's a great addition and right in the perfect location for downtown. So I'm glad the Historical Society kind of, you know, stewarded that and it was not a trivial renovation, I know. So thank you. What else? Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I don't give your shorthand all the time because you're talking to people. I know the 21 projects, is that a list that we can look at?
So that's, it's in here, but this is the handout that's available. I can give you this if you need one. And it's the same handout that's on all of the boards. So each box here is one of the boards and these are the 21. There's nine goals, 12 projects, but there's 21 things for us to think about. All right. Thank you all for coming out. This has been fantastic. It's been a great turnout, great conversation. Keep in touch, come to the council meetings or watch them on Zoom. And if you want to sit in on those monthly meetings, the fourth Thursday of every month on Zoom, we might skip this month because we've been busy putting this night together, but we'll be in touch for sure. Thank you, everybody.